Recording in progress.
Don't get to use this much, so. Hate to break up the conversations, but it is time, a little past time. I'd like to call the meeting of June 10th of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners to Order and ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Did anybody sign up to speak on an agenda matter?
No.
If not, we will move right into the Commissioners' Approval of the Accounts Payable docket. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsman?
Aye. Next, from IPG, Approval of Bid Award for RNS 92502-S, Resurfacing Rehabilitation on Various Roads.
Good morning. Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floors of County-City Building. This is the, last week we received bids for our subdivision paving package for 2025. We received two bids and we, the parent, well, the low bidder, we checked the bids and the low bidder was Milestone Contractors out of South Bend. I'm trying to find the number, but it's cut off of the sheet, I think. The bids were close. It's in the 101 million, 1.2 million dollar range, if 1.1 million dollar range. Sorry, it's cut off the sheet and I didn't write it down because I didn't realize it was cut off the sheet.
1,136,000?
That's it.
Thank you.
And the bids themselves were really close. It's good that we're seeing asphalt prices start to come down. Talking with people in the industry, all it takes though is a fuel price change and it can shoot right back up. But for right now, we're living 2019 again, so when it comes to asphalt, so. We've reviewed it and recommend your approval.
Any questions?
Sure. I just want to know, what is that per mile? Did you figure that out?
I didn't figure it out. We, it's, this package includes 3.16 miles.
Okay.
So that, can figure that out that way. I believe it's probably around 250, 300 probably, whereas we had been seeing them upwards of 450 per mile.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions for Mr. Matters, do we have a motion to approve the bid award to Milestone for Resurfacing Rehabilitation?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, from our clerk, Approval of the Professional Services Agreement Renewal with RBM Voting for Election Equipment and Processes.
Amy Roloff is clerk of the Circuit Court. This, I do not have it in front of me, so I apologize about that. This is the contract with RBM for their services that they provide for elections. They've been very consistent with us, certainly during my tenure and previous to that, I believe. We've contracted with them for quite a few years. So this would just be a continuance of the services that they provide.
We did this previously.
Pardon me?
I said, "We've done this previously."
Oh, yes, correct, yes, yes. Right, yes.
And I was just looking... Well, the hardware maintenance and software and firmware, there was no increase in costs. What did, what is causing an increase in cost is days project management, precinct loading, blank ballot stock, Freedom Vote paper rolls, and election day support.
And what I can speak to, one of the differences is that because I, as the clerk, will be on the ballot next year in 2026, we did have to redesign the ballot rolls, the Freedom Vote rolls, because my name cannot be on the, anywhere on the ballot other than as a candidate. So we had to replace the Freedom Vote rolls that we've already purchased in advance.
Well, since neither of us were here, the last time, I was just looking at the cost.
Right.
Being substantially, it's going from, well, combined 232 to 431. 232,000.
I'm happy, again, I don't have it right in front of me, I'm happy to table this and then come, I feel rather unprepared, as a matter of fact, right at this point, so.
Since I looked at it, I should have recognized it as well, that, why there was an increase in cost. I think we should table it to give the clerk and ourselves a little more time to look at that. We've gotten good service from RBM, in my opinion, but that is a big jump in cost.
Would it have to do with, we have no election this year?
There is a lot of maintenance that happens on the machines. If you don't, yeah, there is a lot of maintenance that has to happen on the machine, so. But I, but I agree, it's a, those are, those are good questions and I would feel better if we did table it.
And there's no cost, to Tony's point, there's no cost in 2025 for those additional services. It comes in in 2026, I did see that.
Yes.
Gentlemen, do we have a, have a motion to table this?
Motion to table.
Second.
A motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Before you leave, I just want to say thank you and we're proud of you going to DC and representing St. Joe County in election integrity at no cost to us.
At no cost, no cost to the, no cost to that county, yes, absolutely. Well, thank you very much.
Please do know.
I enjoyed presenting at that conference.
Next, Physical Assets, Approval of the Bid Award for the Archives Elevator Replacement Project.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bree Roberts, Director of Physical Assets for St. Joseph County, offices on the 7th floor of this building. So this is the finalization of our bid process for the Archives elevator. Just to run through the information on the bid again, we did just receive this one bid, which was from Schindler Elevator, their base bid amount being $194,000, which, just as information, actually, when we quoted this, I believe it was two years ago, it was 196, so it's, I believe, $2,000 and some change, a little bit less than what they quoted previously, which we thought was surprising. So we do find this advantageous. The one caveat here is that the Archives Division was given funding for this within their budget in 2025, but it was only 150,000. And I believe that was because at the time, we had two quotes in front of us and Otis Elevator had come in quite a bit lower. But alas, Otis did not bid. And so we are left with Schindler. We do believe that their proposal is advantageous, but we will need to bridge that gap of the $44,000. And so I've recommended a funding source there for you, if you find that favorable. And like I said, Physical Assets and Archives do find this favorable and ask for your award.
Did Otis Elevator, did they specify why they didn't bid? I guess the reason why I'm asking, because they were lower the previous time.
Yes. And actually, we had a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting on-site, so that vendors could view the actual elevator site itself, and Otis were the only ones that actually showed for that. And so I know that they were interested. I did not bring the actual email with me, but I believe what they stated was basically the terms in the bid, there were some timelines, there were liquidated damages that were included in the bid, and I think it was some of those terms that they found not favorable.
Since a movement from 11:38, from one line to another, we can do that without...
Yep, that's an inline transfer.
Any other questions?
Wasn't, wasn't there like a safety issue that came up just recently?
So the Archives elevator has been red-tagged for some time, and it's actually not a people mover, it's just for boxes. They load it and then they shut the gate and send it down, but it's been red-tagged, so we actually haven't been able to use it for some time. This is the one at the Archives facility over on Lafayette.
Given the number of boxes that they have to move, it's been more than an inconvenience for them.
Agree.
Good morning. This is Katrina from the Archives, and I think the issue that Raphael is mentioning is not in regards to the elevator.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Has that, has that been resolved?
It's being worked on. IT Thomas from IT has brought several companies down to walk, to start the process on it. So, yes, it's being worked on.
Okay, that was, with your correspondence, that was very concerning, from my perspective.
Yeah, from ours too, because as long, like I said, as long as I've been here, I never thought I would have needed any type of cameras or anything like that until that incident happened. Then I'm just standing there like, okay, hey, you know, we have to service the public, so I was trying to be as polite as I can, but...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was being addressed.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I certainly think we should address it, but I, Katrina, as you noted, it was the first time this has occurred, but it is good that we're moving forward with addressing access to the building and security.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the bid award for Archives Elevator Replacement Project to Schindler?
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, Approval of Access Controls for the County-City Building 7th Floor and Loading Dock Areas.
Yep, so as we kind of continue that conversation about access control, this is related to conversations that have been happening over the last couple months regarding public space versus interior employee-only spaces. And so this proposal itself finalizes everything that we had set out to kind of make sure that the 7th floor is secure in that way, as well as filling some gaps in the lower level on the dock. And so we've got the double-door access, but then there's also that door kind of off to the side, which doesn't have any access controls on it, is not well-secured, and so this will kind of, like I said, bridge the gap there, so that we can make sure both the dock and the 7th floor are both tied up with access controls. So the total amount of the New Age quote, which would, I think is the most responsive quote, especially based on the price, is $16,111.33. We did have Pace Systems also quote this, but they came in at $22,471, so quite a bit more expensive. We do have also previous systems installed by New Age, and so we know that they do good work. And I propose the split funding mechanism for this, one line being for the material and another being for the labor, which gives you the grand total, and I would ask for your support.
Grand total being $16,111.33?
Yes.
Well, while the public doesn't see it often, the loading dock is a point of which security can easily be breached, through no fault of facilities or anybody, but just the way, and the number of people we have down there doing work in the building. Any questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the access control additions and changes for the 7th floor and the County-City Building dock?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, you're just all over this today, aren't you?
I know it.
Approval of the fire alarm inspection renewal for the jail.
So this is, as we continue our role on trying to make sure all of our fire alarm, fire panel, fire systems are up to snuff and making sure that they are in agreements for inspections, so that we can stay compliant. There are two on your agenda, kind of within the same vein, so one being for the jail, one being for the police post. So this first one is for the jail. This is a three-year service agreement renewal with New Era, so they've had New Era in the past. We did think that the three-year agreement is advantageous just because of the savings with them guaranteeing the price for the term. And as you look at VFP Fire Systems, they also quoted this project, you can see that the rate does go up for those extended terms, and so we do find New Era to be the most responsive quota for this work. The services are to be performed annually, as outlined in the agreement before you, and we do have similar agreements in place for other facilities. And so this is, again, just to tie up the fire alarm inspection for the jail for this three-year service agreement. And Physical Assets and Facility Maintenance find this favorable and ask for your approval.
Questions, comments? Well, we certainly have to make sure that the fire alarm system is working properly.
Agree.
Can't, can't ignore that. There being no other questions or comments, I would ask for a favorable recommendation on the fire alarm inspection renewal for the jail.
Move to approve.
Second. A motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving to the police post, a similar request for fire alarm and security monitoring renewal.
Yep, so this one is, like I said, along the same vein. This is a three-year service agreement, also with New Era. We did also have VFP quote this, they quoted a one-year term, but they actually, in their quote, are requiring a upgrade of hardware, so that hardware installation alone is $1,800. And so although you'll see that the VFP annual costs do look to be less, given that one-time installation and our good vendor relationship with New Era, we decided that the most responsive quote for this facility is also New Era for that three-year service term. This one is proposed to be retroactive to January 7th, as they have actually been servicing this facility all year also. So I felt like that had to kind of weigh into the decision-making here, although we didn't, you know, we lapsed on the agreement, they've still been servicing, and so, as I stated, they've been a good vendor partner for the county. And Physical Assets and Facility Maintenance find this favorable and ask for your approval.
I think we should approve it, but how did this one slip through the cracks? I know that Facilities has been discovering numerous things, lack of preventive maintenance, et cetera, that hasn't occurred in the past.
Yes, and there, as you can tell, because this is probably the eighth or ninth agreement that we've brought before you, within the same vein. Historically, these agreements were done independently, and so the terms don't line up. This one was actually tied in with an agreement for PSAP. And so when they brought it forward to us, we had to kind of dig into that a little bit, because their initial proposal included PSAP and the post, and I don't know if that was just how it was done historically. So basically, we worked to get them to separate out those two facilities and really right-size the agreements for each facility, so that we can kind of compartmentalize. We passed that PSAP one off to PSAP themselves to look into and make sure that that would meet their needs and bring forth, and then this one just closes the gap on the post. So this one did take a little bit more time.
Bree, is the timing the same for the PSAP?
So I believe...
In other words, did it start, have they been doing that since January out at PSAP as well?
That is my understanding, yep, that's my understanding. And if that agreement hasn't been before this body yet, it will be. Like I said, we passed that off to PSAP to handle, since they do operate somewhat independently out there, but I believe it's a very similar agreement, our proposed three-year renewal.
Well, I think you and John have done a great job.
Thank you.
Looking for these things and identifying them and bringing them to our attention.
We've got a good team.
I think we do.
Bree, that's really the comment I was going to make, because with professional services, you're really not required to go out and get multiple bids, but I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate the fact that you still do that. I mean, we are talking taxpayer dollars here, so that's very much appreciated that you do that, and not only that, when you get these bids, you look into them as far as any detail, you know, when we're talking about what's on hand now, the differences between the three-year agreement not increasing and the other company's three-year agreement did include increases, so that's, that's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the fire alarm and security monitoring renewal for the police post?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bree. Finally, Approval of the Physical Assets Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsman?
Aye. Under new business, we've been asked to invite people to a Meet Your Farmer event by the St. Joseph County Soil and Water Conservation District. Unfortunately, it is tonight from 5:30 to 7:30, which conflicts with the council meeting, but we appreciate them and we want to make sure that we announce that.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Ms. C. Sorsovich with the St. Joe County Soil and Water Conservation District. We don't make it up here very often, so we wanted to give you a little update of what we've been doing in the county lately. The mission of the district is to help county residents improve their natural resources through conservation and education. We work in many areas of conservation, from helping farmers choose the best conservation practices for their property, to helping landowners choose or how, plan how best to remove invasive species, or what plants, native plants would be best in their pollinator habitat. In the past year, we've been focusing on increasing our community outreach. We have attended many community events and symposiums, we've developed programs. For instance, one of our newest is Stormwater Program. We provide communities and families with stormwater kits, which includes things like rakes and safety vests and gloves, and teach them how to clean out their storm drains in their neighborhood and why that's important for our water. Our educator has developed many programs for students from pre-K through college, as well as adults, to teach about the plants and animals and microbes all around us and the importance of conservation. In March and April alone, she held classroom programs for over 1,200 kids in the county, and she also, one of our other programs, which is one of our favorites, is the Native Plant Growing Kits. We assembled those and she delivered them to schools. Over 580 students participated, each got to grow their own Black Eyed Susans to take home. We've developed all these programs and initiatives for one reason, to teach everyone about the benefits of soil health and water quality and how each of us can make a difference. On May 16th, I expect many of you noticed that there was a dust storm that blew through St. Joseph County. The dust storm was from soil from farms about 200 miles away in Illinois. They were picked up by the high winds. The soil was due to the extreme dry conditions, overly tilled farmlands, the high winds came through, picked it up, carried it all the way through northern Illinois and northern Indiana. This was the worst dust storm the county has seen since the Dust Bowl of the 1930s. The Dust Bowl, in fact, was what led to the development of the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. As a part of our outreach and to teach the community about things like that and why it's important that we use conservation practices, we are hosting our second annual Meet Your Farmer on July 10th. It will be at Lee's Edible Acres in North Liberty. He has utilized conservation practices on his farm for many years, and he is one of the members of our board. We invite you all to join us at the table for an evening of conversation about how each of us benefit from the conservation on the farm and in our backyards, and about how each of us can contribute to protecting our natural resources. You have the invitations. We also, I also provided a card that explains some of the practices and some of the ways we've utilized funds through 2024. And so just for your information, we'd love for you to join us next month, if you can. We'd also, if you can't bear, but you are interested in more information, we would be happy to arrange a legislative tour, where we can visit different farms around the county and talk to the farmers about their practices. Thank you.
And let me start by apologizing, because...
I, I'm a little nervous.
I'm so focused on the 10th, and this is really in July.
Yes, I was a little nervous that I wrote the, put the wrong...
Now, on my notes, I...
Okay, good.
Transpose that, so my apologies for that. And I noticed considerable, through your efforts, partially, that the farmers and landowners received $643,572 in federal funds for these efforts last year.
Yes, just last year.
Well, now that I know which month it is... I was looking at that, I said, "Why are we getting this the same day?"
I was really nervous that I made a mistake.
Conflicted with our council meeting.
So thank you, and if you're able to make it, we'd love to have you.
Thank you. Let's see if I can get this one right. We've received notice from the Purdue Extension Office that they will be moving to the Fairgrounds office for pre-Fair Week and Fair Week. That covers the period from June 23rd to July 6th. They'll be posting online and have their phones transferred. So just a heads-up, they do that every year, and they work effectively from the Fairgrounds during that time. Now, if there is no other items to announce, we can move to public comment. Okay, let's move to those, nobody in the room wishes to speak today. Let's move to those online. I believe Steve's hand is up first.
Yes, thanks, Commissioners. Appreciate your taken comment. I just wanted to talk a little bit today, I know it's not on your agenda today, but about the county bond issue regarding the Anderson Park out in North County. Steve Francis, Judea Lake Drive, Clay Township. It's something... It's something that we've been waiting for and trying to get started for twenty-five years, as you know. It finally got underway, even though we had a kind of deal worked out in the past with the Salt Garage, but that got torpedoed, and then you had to spend money purchasing land elsewhere to put the Salt Garage on. And now it looks like there's some significant opposition, and I think that's unfortunate. We've been waiting twenty-five years for a park in the northeast corner of the county. It's been, you know, we've already spent money in developing it. I participated in the charrettes and the, the input in what, how the park would be constructed. It's a, it's a nonpartisan issue, I would hope. I hope that it isn't a Republican versus Democrat issue, that parks are not necessary in our county. We've been waiting for many, many years for this. I think that the bond does not add to taxes in any way, it just replaces a bond that's being retired, as you know. Money has already been spent by the RDC, the Redevelopment Commission, with the expectation that this money would be reimbursed, three to four hundred thousand dollars in designing that park and doing some preliminary engineering work. And I would hope that as Commissioners and leaders in the county, as our mayors, so to speak, that you could play a role, particularly Commissioner Baxmeyer, it's in your district, in making sure that we can bring this to conclusion, that we can act in a bipartisan manner. Unfortunately, I saw the news article of a group of folks out who then came out and opposed it and started posing that public safety is pitted against our parks. We need both, we need public safety, but we also need parks. As you know, a lot of the literature on parks says that parks in our area and around the country really improve health outcomes. They are necessary for our well-being and quality of life in St. Joe County. I hope that it is a nonpartisan or bipartisan issue, that we can move forward with this park after twenty-five years of waiting, and that you, all three of you, will play a role in positively developing this area up in the northeast corner of the county, and that we can expect at the county council meeting tonight that it won't become a bipartisan issue with animosity existing between various personalities on the council, and that you will play a role and, and advertise that role. Let us know what your role was, or is, in making sure that we can achieve this advance for citizens of our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Cheryl, your hand is up.
Thank you, Commissioners, Cheryl Nix, Clay Township. I'd like to read excerpts from the South Bend Tribune article of December fourth entitled, "Sheep Chomp, Farmer Gains, Honeysuckle Solar Saves on Mowing Costs," written by Joseph Ditz. Electrified honeysuckle solar farm and its blend of money-making known as agrivoltaics hit its full one hundred eighty-eight megawatt electricity generating capacity by mid-October. South Bend-based Innovatus Solar served as a construction contractor for honeysuckle, drawing eighty-five percent of its labor locally for the workforce of about two hundred. The sheep moved here from their other home, LaGrange County, this past spring. Females then birthed their lambs, seizing the emerging grasses like fescues and rye, red and white clover and flowering plants that had been purposely planted to both feed them and maintain the soil's health. Now with a smaller flock and a reduced need for nutrition, all of the remaining sheep will be driven back to the two hundred and seventy-acre Gunthrup Farms by the end of November. "This is an old way of managing sheep," Gunthrup said, "with an injection of new technology." The sheep do an effective job of controlling the green growth. Every one to three days, the farmers move the flock to a different area or paddock confined by a simple electric fence. Light Source BP reports that the seeds of twenty-five species were planting, planted, including twenty native species. "The honeysuckle site has a pollinator-friendly and sheep-friendly mix," Tyler Kanjucheski, Innovatus Vice President of Sustainability, said. For Gunthrup, the ground beneath solar panels opened a chance for him to expand. "If you go back to each successive generation, you have to do something different," he said of the economics of farming. "Agrivoltaics is the next big opportunity to allow us to grow and be very progressive." "I encourage residents of Walkerton, you Commissioners and council members who are concerned about solar farms to visit honeysuckle. Talk to Mr. Gunthrup, and understand that this could be a great opportunity to preserve soil, protect pollinators, and help farmers. The antagonors, antagonism towards solar farms is misplaced, and I'm concerned about this ordinance that's going in front of the APC that might limit the interest in moving solar farms into our county, especially given data centers' great need for electricity." "Finally, before I go, I was hoping you could repeat the location of the meat, the farmer location. I missed where they're going to have that." Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else online, and I will address Cheryl's question? Not seeing anybody, you didn't miss it, because I failed to mention it. The location is three zero one three five New Road, down in North Liberty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Gentlemen, there being nobody else, whose hand is raised? Do we have a motion to recess?
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Recording stopped.